Eric, are you, are we all set to start? Okay. I can't tell from the screen, so. Okay, perfect. Okay. Calling to order the combined meeting for Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six. Roll call, please. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. We have anyone joining us virtually tonight. Please feel free to type that comment into the chat box and we will read it into the meeting for you. And I'm gonna rely, I don't see any comments, but Mr. Hanson, let me know if anything pops up. Okay. Sorry, I'm on line. No. Okay. There being no public comments, we will move on to presentations.
All right, we have two presentations this evening. Our first one will be Mr. Peterson from West Oak Middle School, who will give us an update on their learning walk, Schools to Watch visit. Mr. Peterson.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to talk with you about this because this was a relatively big event and we just wanted to share that with all of you as well. But really, just a very successful way of highlighting a lot of the great things that we do in our school and, you know, through our designation, through our designation of the Illinois Horizon Schools to Watch or the National Forum Schools to Watch that we, that we received here last spring. That is through the agency here called the Association for Illinois Middle Schools. They approached us earlier here this fall, along with the other six schools that, that were designated in Illinois Horizon School to Watch in regards to offering a learning walk where anybody, you know, any, any school official, any teacher, any university student could come in and just see, you know, see what, what we do, you know, how we work, how we function, you know, the services that we offer. You know, just kind of get a feel for, for our school and this is, this is a great way for them to, especially the prospective people that are looking to go for a, a Schools to Watch designation, which is a great way of highlighting a lot of the great things that we're doing in our, in our building as well. So out of these seven schools, you know, we were one of them that, that offered the Schools to Watch. We had twenty-seven visitors and to give you a perspective here, the second most was seven. So we, we blew everybody else out of the water. You know, and it helps because some of these schools are very rural, you know, we're, we're right in the, we're right in suburbs. So, I mean, there's just a lot of, a lot of people around as well. So really, it was just in the morning, really, and like I said, we just wanted to highlight some of the programs, the offerings, the achievements. We did some, some publicity, you know, and, and we were just kind of, we're trying to gain, trying to, trying to build up as much interest as possible, but we had a real variety of people, you know, whether it's school, school administrators from, from districts around where we are. We had a number of university students that were just graduating. So hey, it's, it's a great way for recruiting that, you know, hey, we got, you think about us here when you start applying for, you know, for prospective jobs and then also, and then also teachers as well. So, you know, to kick us off here, you know, that day, you know, what we, what I wanted to show them is truly, you know, you know, an overall perspective on, on what we are and how we function. So we started this off and, you know, really asked a lot of, I asked for a lot of assistance from our teachers, but also what was newly formed this year is our, what we call our Student Ambassadors. Student ambassadors, basically there are five student ambassadors for each grade level. And so five, sixth graders, five, seventh, five, eighth graders, and really it was voluntary, voluntary, you know, we didn't, we didn't, it's not like a student council where we were, you know, you have to get voted in. It's basically if you're, if you're willing to, to meet with me twice a month. We, we talked about school assemblies, we talked about reteachings. You know, we just talked about, you know, we look at our data, we talk, you know, in a lot of school choice, you know, a lot of decisions that we make are, you know, you know, are from these kids too. So really it's kids that just really want to get in and, and want to be heard and, and we want to give them that voice as well. So really, we started off with half, of the fifteen kids that we had, I go, hey, who would like to help out with this event? And all fifteen of them went, you know, hey, I want to help out. So I had to divide it up where, you know, the, you know, half of our kids were escorting our visitors to a specific room. The other half were, were offering a, a session and I'll talk with you just about that here in just a little bit. But this is, this is kind of starting us off here. Dr. Sharma Lewis kind of gave the, the, the overall view of the district and, and very impressive. And I got a lot of follow-up questions on that. It's just, you know, it's almost like, is this, is this, you know, is this data true? I mean, is this, is this really what this district's like? And it's, and I go, yeah, it's, it's hard to believe, but it, this truly is that special of, of a place here, which was, which was really neat to see. Um, you know, from there, after, after Dr. Sherman Lewis, I gave kind of a brief overview. We had two teams of kids, you know, some of these kids might look a little familiar. But we, you know, being that we had twenty-seven, twenty-seven visitors, we had to divide them in half. You know, our school's pretty small anyway, so we sent them in different directions and they kind of overlapped and came back over, came back in. But um, at first, when the kids are outside, they're, you know, as, as chatty as they are, they were, they were so nervous. But once you get them rolling though, they, they just don't, they, they're good to go. So um, you know, they, they were so excited afterwards, they, you know, they, they really kind of felt like they, they did something pretty big here. So it was nice to see it. And the visitors really enjoyed seeing them as well. From there, I know it's a little small, it's a little bit bigger behind me. You know, we wanted to give an idea of what, of what kind of things that we offer. So we offered five sessions. And we gave multiple time slots for it. So our visitors, if they wanted to see one session, they could, they didn't, they weren't able to miss another one. They could come back and catch the other one. But um, but some of the things that we wanted to highlight within our district, within our school are, and basically these are all divided up based upon the four criteria on how to, how to earn that, that Illinois Horizon Schools to Watch designation, which is academic excellence, developmental responsiveness, social equity, and then also organizational, organizational structures and processes. But really, we, we highlighted our, our district-wide SCL program with Mrs. Rogers and Mr. Freiberger. They did a very nice job with that. Also Daisy Carrera helped out with our community outreach session. Other items was our PBIS teaching and learning that was through Mrs. Grub, or Ms. Grub and Mr. Carr. Our MTSS process, which was Ms. Harmon and Ms. Mandro and kind of the showstopper, and I'll, I'll give you a picture of them here in just a little bit, was we had the other half of our student ambassadors present on student engagement and after-school activities. So kind of show you guys a couple of pictures on that. So that is our social worker, Ms. Harmon and our, our reading interventionist, Ms. Mandro speaking on our MTSS frameworks. There is Mrs. Grub, our ELA teacher, and our social work intern, Mr. Carr, presenting on PBIS and how we, how we look at data and how we make data-driven decisions based upon student behavior that we're seeing. Mr. Freiberger's in action there with, with our math interventionist, Mrs. Rogers. They, they get, like I said, they were given their presentation on, on our SCL committee. And there's our, there's our student crew, you know, presenting on our student engagement and after-school activities. As I said, some of these kids might look familiar to some of our board members. And then overall, this is, you know, our, at the end here, we just kind of got all together and we, we just took a picture. Like I said, these, these kids, they, they really felt like they had a voice and they had a part in this and, and they felt, you know, they, they were very excited afterwards. So, so it was just a very positive event. I got a lot of great feedback from the adults that were there. You know, a lot of great information was, was something that was reiterated and just a lot of people that were impressed. You know, with what we, what, what, what we have and what we have been able to work with, with what we had. And, you know, one of the things I, I like to say is, you know, we're small, but we're mighty, you know, and, and, you know, we, we care about our kids, we love our kids. And, and I think that's really what sets us apart from, from a lot of districts. So, you know, the, the Association for Illinois Middle Schools, they, they really enjoyed the, the event. This is a very successful one, like I said, much bigger than, than anything they've had earlier this year. So I just received an email last, this past weekend inviting the kids, not me, but the kids to present at their exploratory summit and, and at Hadley Middle School in Glen Ellyn in March. So, so yeah, so we'll, we'll see if the kids are interested. I think they will be. I just, now, now the next part is, you know, what, what do you want to present on? And so, but it was just a great event. It was pos, you know, it was very positive for everybody, just a great way to highlight what we do, you know, teachers really enjoyed it. They got to, they get to highlight what they're doing in their classrooms. Our, our kids did a phenomenal job. I did, I did preface this by going into their lunchroom the day before saying, hey, don't embarrass the family here. But no, they were, they were just absolutely amazing. So I, I couldn't be more prouder to be, you know, principal there and a principal here and, and just be part of just a great, great environment like this. So. Any questions?
All right, our second presentation is going to be an overview of our audit and so I'm gonna hand the floor over to Mr. Rogers, who will introduce our guest.
All right, I'm very sorry to steal your thunder here, Brandon, but the, the the only thing that can top it is the annual audit discussion. So I'm excited. So Kathy, very happy that she was able to, to make it here from our audit firm, Eater Casella, and is going to provide a, an overview of our recent fiscal year twenty-two audit. And so the attachments in your board packet and also you have a hard copy. So please feel free to ask any questions.
I have my reading glasses on, so I can't see beyond my screen here. I'd like to thank Dr. Sharma Lewis and the board for having me in tonight. I am, and Eric, of course. I, I actually do love talking about the audit. It is, it sounds weird and odd, but that's, you know, I do love my job. So I'm happy to be here to kind of explain the process a little bit. Just a brief overview, I'm not going to go into details on all the financials. I know you're all aware of the financials. You could get reports, you know, on going, on an ongoing basis and don't need me to do the analysis. That's someone else's job. So just want to let you know, the audit went very well. Staff is prepared and accommodating to all the requests, extremely responsive. Eric and his team, including Deanna and Belinda, extremely helpful, make sure that our job is a lot easier just by being prepared, et cetera. So we appreciate that. As part of the audit, we evaluate the district's internal controls over the financial reporting and we test those controls and just happy to report that in general, those appear to be appropriate, appropriately designed and working properly. As part of the audit, we also make recommendations maybe on things that we see that are not, not necessarily reportable conditions, but just efficiencies and things like that. We make recommendations and management has always been responsive to that and have implemented changes that we've recommended. So pleased to report that as well. For the current year, there's no management letter related to financial statements. In other words, no findings, reportable findings. So that's extremely important, definitely something you as the board want to hear. And then for the audit opinion, you'll see in the auditor's opinion, there are actually two mentions of an opinion and one will state that the district has an adverse opinion on its financial statements in relation to generally accepted accounting principles. However, the district reports on the regulatory basis of accounting, which is prescribed by the State Board of Education. And so under those finance, those accounting principles, there's an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. So not uncommon, you know, many, many districts use that regulatory basis. It's completely acceptable. And as I said, you know, pretty much prescribed by the state. And what that clean opinion means is that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. So again, you know, what, what is reported there generally reflects, present fairly the condition of the district's finances. After the opinion, there's a letter on internal control over financial reporting. And basically what that is explaining is that as part of the audit, we look at compliance with laws and regulations, grant agreements and so forth. We test those regulation, we test the district's procedures over those, those controls. We don't provide an opinion related to that, but we also state that we didn't find, identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So again, really positive news for you. I'm just gonna just do a real high-level description of what's included then, because after those two letters, you know, the audit goes on for, you know, sixty pages or something like that. And just to give you a now, just again, an overview, a description of what, what you see. Starting on page six and seven is a statement of assets, liability and fund balance. This is the equivalent of a business balance sheet. So, you know, again, ba, based on the, the type of, the base of accounting that's used. We can't say, oh, it's, you know, the balance sheet, it's very similar. What you're going to see on there is the assets owned by the district, any liabilities. And generally, you're not going to see liabilities because again, you're on the cash basis of accounting. Occasionally you'll see a payroll liability or something like that, really just representing a timing difference, but it doesn't show debt or anything like that. And then as far as the residual, the fund balance is separated into reserved and unreserved amounts. Typically, in, in terms of reserves, you're required to report things like student activity funds and the education fund. You know, that fund balance is reserved for that purpose. In the Social Security IMR fund, you're going to see a reserved amount that is again attributable to IMR reserve there. So. The statement of revenue change expenses and changes in fund balance on page eight and nine is really just an overview of the revenues minus the expenses. So similar to what a business would uh, uh, call a, a profit and loss or an income statement. And it shows by fund, the net changes. So you would be able to look through and see, oh, the ed fund overall had a decrease of about four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. You know, small increases in some of the other operational funds. A decrease in the capital projects fund after transfers from other funds and, you know, you are able to pretty much look at that statement and see, okay, while there were ongoing planned projects, it's very, you know, again, there's nothing hidden there. It's pretty obvious. The reasons for those decreases and decreases in fund balance. Of, overall, you know, look, just looking, revenue is fairly stable, significant change between the prior year and the current year, which again, I'm, I'm always a year behind you all year in fiscal twenty-three, but it, between fiscal twenty-one and twenty-two, I think the, probably the most significant change in your financials is the, the receipt of additional one point five million dollars in that federal, those federal, basically their COVID-related funds. And expenditures in most of the funds increased mainly support services, especially in, as I said earlier, the capital projects funds, those ongoing projects, et cetera. The other funds, you will see an increase presumably again due to the school being resumed, you know, from the previous year where, you know, there wasn't a lot of in-school service being provided. So again, that's just kind of a high-level view of what, what one would look at and see there. On page ten and eleven, a statement of revenue received. So it's not different, it's really not showing different results than what's on that previous statement, but this is drilling down into more specifics. So where one statement says local revenues and it's summarized, the next statement shows what are the local revenues and it'll go into detail about, you know, you know, property taxes, replacement taxes, whatever, whatever they happen to be. So that again, is just more specific detail relating to the sources of revenue for the district. Starting on page twelve are the budget to actual expenditures. And again, you're not going to see different detail in terms of those actual costs. It's a drill down, again, very detailed, line-by-line item and then that comparison to the budget. So, you know, again, it provides an opportunity to analyze those line items on the budget compared to actual. Following the budget to actual schedule, there's a nice fourteen pages or so, and that's actually small for, for most reports. Those are the notes to the financial statements. And I think for a lot of, let's say, you know, unenlightened users, this might really provide a better explanation. If someone doesn't really know what they're looking at in terms of the financial statements, the notes to the financial statements provide additional details and explanations about the statements and detail that support those underlying dollar, dollar amounts. So just again, some very useful information. These are consistent from year to year. Again, all of these notes are required to be reported. Not a lot of flexibility in terms of the language used. It just describes again the financial statements under the required basis of accounting. One change that you will see in fiscal twenty-two compared to fiscal twenty-one is the last note, it's note nineteen. And it discusses the adoption of GASB eighty-seven, which is a, an auditing standard, an accounting standard for governments, and it's related to the district's leases. These are not purchase leases, so they're not financed purchase. These are operating leases. So essentially rental agreements. This is not new for the district. Adjust means that prior to the adoption of this GASB, leases were, were accounted for differently and reported in the footnotes differently. The change is that the district is now required to report those items, again, footnotes only as, I, I want to say quasi-debt, because technically it's not the district's debt, but essentially the present value of those future payments have to be reported and a lump sum. And this, this standard also presumes that those assets that are being used under those leases are, technically the district has control over those assets. So where you don't normally have a, because of your regulatory reporting, you don't show fixed assets on your financials. If you were reporting under GAAP, you would include those leased assets as part of your balance sheet. It doesn't really apply again. The only application here in terms of the district under the regulatory basis is to disclose that information in, in the footnotes to the financial statements. And that's really basically what it says. So aggregated value of leases are included in those specific footnotes. The last section of the audit report is the federal audit. So if your federal assistance is over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a, in a year, you're required to have a federal audit over programs. We select based on certain criteria, some programs. And we were happy to report no findings or compliance issues related to the federal programs, which is kind of a challenge, especially with new money flowing in. Older established programs, the requirements, compliance requirements and rules, et cetera, are pretty well-known and understood. With a lot of these news, new programs coming out with this, you know, rescue money, it was really challenging for a lot of districts to have an understanding of what the requirements are. And in year one of those grants, it often, the compliance guidance came out after the fact. So it was really kind of hard to play by the rules when you found out after the game. So again, I'm happy to report no, no findings or compliance issues with that. And that's basically the whole audit report in a nutshell. The last, I have two more comments and one is the annual financial report, which is kind of a, a condensed version of your financial statements and it's, you know, again, the required by the state. That particular report calculates a financial profile score for the district. And it's really, it does this profile score based on, it's a measure of financial strength and it's based on things like cash on hand, revenues and versus expenditures. It has a measure related to your short-term and long-term debt, et cetera. The scale for the score is up to four point oh. And for fiscal twenty-two, the district's profile score is three point eight, which is included in the highest designation. So the, the designation is recognition. So under, in terms of, you know, ISB's, you know, financial profile, the district is in the highest category. And that three point eight for fiscal twenty-two is the same as it was in the prior year. So it was three point eight also in fiscal twenty-one. So also very good news to report on that. And the only other thing I want to mention is future GASB standards that are coming out that affect the district or may affect the district. Again, with, with COVID and everything, just like, you know, everywhere else, things are a little bit delayed and, you know, the, the lease standard took a couple of years to be implemented. And the newest standard that may affect the district is GASB ninety-six. It will not likely be occurring in fiscal twenty-three, but down the road, maybe a year or two. And it's related to subscription-based information technology agreements. Depending on the dollar amount of those types of agreements the district has, those may again be reported in the same way as those leases where the districts are receiving a benefit and has control over some of those things potentially. And those values would have to be disclosed in your financial statements. So again, that will probably not happen for fiscal twenty-three, but potentially the next year. So just that's the next thing coming down the pike. So. All right. Happy to answer questions if you have any.
Just wouldn't wonder how many other districts get a three point eight rating?
Not all of the districts that I work with every year. So, you know, again, all of this profile schools for all districts are available on ISB's website. So again, I see some, you know, I've seen some kind of low. A lot of them are between, let's say, three point oh and three point six, not uncommon. That's not in the recognition category. I can't remember the name off the top of my head. All of a sudden, I've gone blank on what that is. But again, it's, it's not, it's not a given. It's not a given. So.
Yeah, and for our district too, we are, correct me if I'm wrong, we're capped based on, we were not able to get a four point oh currently because we have a lot of long-term debt that's outstanding based on our referendum. So there's some criteria that kind of caps the ability, you know, for your financial profile score. So just a quick hit as far as where we may be as a district.
Yes, that's true. And, and, and if I remember looking at your AFR, in four of the five categories, it was a four point oh and the one category that is not a four point was the long-term debt. Okay, so again, I mean, you know, you have to, have to issue debt to survive in, in the many, in most instances. So that's, you know, again, that's not, not out of the ordinary. And so, yeah. And again, you can look on ISB's website and just, if you just even Google ISB financial profile scores, you can see all districts. So. Other questions? Well, thanks for your attention and thanks again for having me.
And that concludes our presentations for the evening.
Great. Okay, then we will turn now to our business agenda. We have a number of items for action this evening. The first item up for action is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board member, staff administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda items A through E as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please? Oh, yeah, sure. Sorry. No problem. Yes. Okay, that motion's approved. The next item on our agenda is Okay, that motion's approved. The next item on our agenda is personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one new hire, one sick leave, two retirement notices, two leaves of absence and one resignation. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that motion is also approved. I'm moving on to our, um, approval of press issue 110. Before we, um, go through this, I just wanted to make sure no one else had any question about any of the issues. There's an awful lot of changes. So, um, okay, then whereas policy creation and updates and changes to adopt the policies are provided for District 76 through the subscription to Policy Reference Educational Subscription Service, Press from the Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB, and whereas the policy committee reviewed the policies and a first reading of the policies was held at the January 17th, 2023 Board Business Meeting, therefore be it resolved that, which actually I think is wrong because we read them in the December meeting. I think we read them at the December meeting. But I'm going to continue. Um, therefore be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education moves to approve the policy changes as presented and reviewed in IASB Press Issue 110. Um, those categories are board member elections and ethics, district operations, employee conduct qualification and leaves, the Crown Act, student attendance and records, curriculum and instruction, student health and behavior, miscellaneous and PRM five-year reviews. May I have a motion to approve those policies, please? Yes. Okay, that mission's approved.
And we'll change the date to reflect that December meeting.
And then, thank you. And then the last, um, item for action tonight is approving the sale of real estate property, which is the sale of Fairhaven. Um, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the real estate purchase and sale agreement within this, with the Special Education District of Lake County. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And that motion is approved. That concludes our business agenda for the evening. Um, moving on now to board discussion.
Hey, I just have one item for board discussion and, um, we meet on a monthly basis as superintendents, our Stevenson Peters, as well as our Mondeline Peters. So a few months ago, uh, the Mondeline Theaters wanted to get together to, with, um, superintendents as well as with two board members, um, for a joint breakfast meeting. And that date was set for, or has been set for February 2nd from eight to nine at, um, Hawthorne District 73. So, um, I had shared that with Joy, if, you know, the board president and one of the, uh, board member is able, are able to attend. Uh, and the only reason that we can't have more is because of, you know, the Open Meetings Act. But, um, just to kind of talk a little bit about our discussions as we're talking with CEDOL and just some of the other joint projects, um, that we've been working on this past year, especially with, you know, the transition of new leadership in, uh, Fremont. And just in the past, uh, four years of all of our districts. So that being said, um, is anyone available? And Joy, are you available?
Yes, I can attend.
Okay. Would anybody? February 2nd, it's a Thursday from eight to nine AM at Hawthorne District 73.
I just thought someone said I'm sick. Okay. It sounds like Mrs. Vailis couldn't attend as well.
Alright, so I will send both of you the invite as well as, uh, the details and put your name into the agenda so they can post it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our discussion. Um, for any other information requests, we have one that was responded to. Notices and communications, there, um, are a couple of things there. I don't know if you want to go through them.
Sure. So save the dates is just, you know, more or less informational on, um, when we have those Lake Division dinners. Um, and I believe one is on a Saturday. So we have our, the annual dinner, which is in March. If you'd like to attend, please just let Hiram know, or if you'd like to attend the one on February 11th. I think that's more of, um, you know, the breakfast with the legislators.
Do you know yet where the, um, Wednesday one is? I know it says they don't know yet, but I do know if you had heard.
I have not heard. At all of anything.
Okay.
Um, back over here. And then, um, we received a donation from the Longstreet family and they would like to keep, um, that with just remaining anonymous with just the board. So we're just having that available, um, for all of you to be able to view. And then, um, Mondeline High School, uh, is going for a referendum. And so they'll be sharing some more information out, but that was what they would like us to share with their feeder districts. And that is also on their website. So you can see the talking points of that. So they may be reaching out, they're looking to do some smaller groups, um, community forums. So they may be reaching out to some of you as board members. Um, if you're available to attend those. So I'll keep you posted on any of those dates. So that's kind of, um, just the general notices and communication that we have. And then this month and going forward, we'd like to include you all in just the District 76 highlights. We have so much to celebrate and share and be proud of, whether it's with students or with staff or with community or as a school or as a district as a whole. So we kind of went back, um, a few months and put it together, but going forward, it won't be as long. Well, may, might be as long. We hope it's, we hope it's as long. But, um, each month what we do is, uh, staff as or administrators take pictures and submit them into a moment of the month. And then each principal submits them at the district level and then we pick one to represent the district. So you can see, we started it, um, back in, actually there is one missing in September. So we'll share that with you, but we've got October, November and December. So you can see the moments of the month that won throughout the district. Um, we have some basketball conference champion as our seventh grade boys, uh, last month. So you can see that, that we've shared out. And these are things that we share with you, we share with the community, but we just thought you could see them all together. Um, our monthly diamond edge, we got a very nice mention from, um, some of the things that we're doing with STEM in, um, the Illinois State Board of Education newsletter, as well as we had two new, two new little diamonds join our family. Um, so you can see the staff. Um, when they have babies join, um, we like to give them something that sparkles, of course, and then share that out. So, um, just some highlights. And like I said, I hope the, the list continues to grow, but we just wanted to start a new section for you. So you can see all the wonderful things, um, that we're proud of in the district.
Thank you. It's nice to be able to see all that together too, because I feel like we get the emails over time, but you know, when you actually look back on it, it's like, wow, there's so many fantastic things.
Yes. They're fantastic. We agree. Yes. And, you know, it just, uh, like I said, Donna, especially over the break, we're like, wait, I don't know. We really had a chance to discuss in December, all the fabulous things that were happening. So let's, let's put it together. Aren't they great?
Yeah.
It's really tough to pick. Um, and that is all for, uh, notices and communications.
Okay. Fantastic. Um, then we move to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. We do not have any more attendees. So if you are joining us virtually, please feel free to type that into the chat box and we'll read it into the meeting. Uh, we can pause for a moment to allow you time to do so. And Eric, I'm going to rely on you because I can't read that far. Oh, that's easier to say. Yeah, I'm looking at the wrong, I'm looking in the wrong direction. It does not appear though, that we have any comments or questions. So we will move on to others. Does anyone have any others? Okay, then we will move to executive session for the discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, whether for the purpose of approval by the body of minutes or semi annual review of the minutes as mandated by section 2.06 of 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C 21. Um, may I have a motion adjourned to executive session, please? Yes. Thank you, everyone. It's nice to see you all back. Glad to see the district office has like a green time memo.